Hey Dan, I figured it takes me about three minutes to come to the police department. I'm like so I can do this.
All right. Ian, you can do it.
Oh yeah, I have five minutes. I had a police commission. So I figured I had to tie myself up. Yeah.
Well, to order salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mayor Kendalora.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Wentworth.
Here.
Councilor Angeloni.
Here.
Councilor Armond.
Here.
Councilor Caprio.
Here.
Councilor Diamond.
Here.
Councilor Fawnin.
Here.
Councilor Pucci. Councilor Rose.
Here.
Okay, before we go into the minutes, I just wanted to recognize some very special people that are here this evening. Diane Artiz and I believe this is her staff Denise Gonzalez, Ursula Di Martino, Diane Carr, and Carolyn Faussigno. And through their efforts, they have helped greatly Town Hall with their students doing office work and I think various other things that have helped Town Hall. Our finance director mentioned at our last meeting. And on behalf of the Town Council, we wanted to thank you. So we have some certificates here and I understand there's one student here tonight and it's Ian. So Ian, if you'd like to come up and...
How about you? Good. Thank you so much for helping.
You're welcome.
Good job. This certificate was for you. Oh, boy. Thank you so much. It's for your others.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Great job.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thanks, Ian.
Yes.
Okay.
You don't have to stay for the rest of the meetings you don't like. You're more than welcome to, but...
Or you could help us.
Yeah.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. May I have a motion to approve the minutes from the May 19, 2015 Town Council meeting?
I would just like to mention that where it says Dudley Harris spoke about the ad commission. Are we talking about Dudley?
Yeah, it's page four.
Yeah, page four. There's some incorrect sentences here, really. Says Dudley Harris spoke about the ad commission that he is a member of and asked the council to find out who else is on the council. I don't even know what that...
No, it's supposed to be...
Who's on the ad?
...egg. He's on the egg commission.
Right, I know, but I mean...
So that's what it should be.
The rest of the...well, it's not...it's Harrison.
Right.
Right.
So it should be changed to Dudley Harrison and it's the egg commission.
But it said that he's a member of, okay, let's say the ad commission, asks the council to find out who else is on the council?
No, it should be the commission.
Oh, commission, I get it, okay.
On the egg commission.
Yeah.
Then he was going to help with the leases on the properties.
All right, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Moved by Deputy Mayor Wentworth, seconded by Counselor Diamond. Roll call.
Mayor Kendalora.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Wentworth.
Yes.
Councilor Angeloni.
Yes.
Councilor Armond.
Yes.
Councilor Caprio.
Upstaying.
Councilor Diamond.
Yes.
Councilor Fawnin.
Yes.
Councilor Rose.
Yes.
Water Pollution Control Authority Agenda, Item Three, Correspondence, Citizen Statements, None. Item Four, Unfinished Business, None. Item Five, New Business, None. Citizen Statements and Petitions. Okay, moving into the regular Town Council meeting. Item Seven, Reports of Committees, Boards, and Commissions. Permanent Project Building Committee.
We meet next Monday, June 8.
Could I add, just the last meeting in reference to the permanent project building committee, the project for TDS, who the council had said green, were the preferred choice.
That's not a color choice?
Yeah, it's color choices, yes. So I'm...it's coming back from the consultant as dark sage, upper left-hand corner as the recommended versus a forest green, go with a sage green because of that weathering and fading.
Right, it won't fade in this bed.
Yeah.
Sure.
Although, you settled on green, just for point of information, the...one of the other colors in there is a slate type of gray, which this color is called Portland Stone. It matches the color on the Jerome Harrison school. That's an option as well.
What's this, HTTP? HTTP.
Is it the top? This one here?
Yeah.
Does it have a gray one on there too?
Yeah, there's in the middle somewhere. On the left are the least expensive colors on the left versus the right side, which is the premium colors.
John?
Yes?
I had one question. Now, with the permanent project building committee, like a project like this, they're being charged with. And if there's any changes, like, I don't know, in the scope of the work or whatnot, what is like their authority? Would it have to come back to the council? I guess this would be in regards to change orders or, you know, anything major. Like, we have a low bidder, then it seems like after the project gets going, there's a change order after change order.
Yeah, it's just the way they do it.
Right. But is that automatically approved by the permanent project building committee or...
Well, of course, it would be easy to answer that if there was a particular record of the terms of their appointment. That is, if it was going to be, as you say, typically, in my view, a committee is an advisory body and that they...they're sort of on the field, but any decisions that are going to be made, technically, in my view, should come back to either the town manager or the Town Council, depending on who has the active authority for it. So I wouldn't expect the building committee to be making other judgments that go beyond ministerial judgments. Now, I don't know if the...I don't know, the color of the roof, you know, I don't think that's a major decision. It has come back to you, but more, not so much for the color, but because of certain colors really not being weather effective. But so the answer is, I would make it clear to the building committee, if it's not clear, that you want to receive reports, you want to receive their minutes, if they're keeping minutes, I hope they are, and that you consider them to be advisory to either the town manager or to the Town Council. Certainly don't want to wake up six months from now and find out you have a garbage sculpture as part of the...
Right.
Which I learned in doing the ordinance.
Right.
So what about like change orders and stuff? Who would approve change orders for $100,000?
I would think the Town Council would want to be involved in that decision.
Would that...would the threshold be 7,500 bucks?
I don't...I think it's...you see, the point here is that I think the Town Council is the seat of power and that you make that decision. You can draw the line wherever you want to draw it or not draw it at all and say everything comes back here.
Well, they administer what the council...
You know, unless there's some...you know, sometimes boards or commissions or superintendents or town managers have to act immediately, but it's always subject to the later approval of the Board of Ed or the Town Council. So I would say right from the outset that you make it clear that if you want to have a hands-on participation, that you have to make it clear to them. I don't think you have to get into every single detail, but certainly there should be a regular reporting so you know what's going on.
Right.
How are the libraries handled? Is that a parallel here? Like when they had change orders, did it come before council?
Change orders have been handled by permanent project building.
Right.
I mean, I've...
I've...
They just did the high school roof project last summer and all the change orders went through permanent project. The six years that I've been on the council, I haven't seen anything.
And you're 100% right. And I go on to the early meetings of the school projects as well. Once you give them, the committee, the project, it's theirs to run with. They don't come back to you guys typically.
Right.
You know, they do the change orders, they approve, as long as they're within the budget overall that you assign them, it's their purview to make the change orders and so on and so forth.
Right.
The monthly reporting I could see being, you know, a good factor, but I don't think the changes have to come back to the Town Council. That's not historically the way they've been with the ordinance, I don't believe. Once the council assigns it to the building committee, it's their project.
I thought that was the reason of the makeup.
Right, and if there's...I think the question Anthony had, which, you know, I'm trying to figure, you know, figure out where, you know, what they had and what they could do, again, is we typically, you know, the Town Council authorizes the project and we have a contract for X amount of dollars. So the...whether they did it for six years or 10 years or 25 years, they probably never had the authority to sign a change order for $100,000.
Check the charter, I'm not sure. Check the ordinance book, I'm not sure.
Well, the...
Can you check that, John?
Well, I'm reading it right now under duties. This is in the permanent project committee. I've only gotten to the first paragraph, but it says, "The committee, following the authorization to proceed by the Town Council, shall work with the town manager in seeking professional services such as architect or engineer. The committee shall interview appropriate firms and make recommendations back to the Town Council regarding the selection of firms. The committee shall present these design and cost assessments back to the Town Council. Following approval of the Town Council received, the committee shall follow the town's procedures for bidding of said project. Following receipt and review of the bids, the committee shall make recommendations to the town manager for the bid award. Permanent project building committee shall be responsible in overseeing the construction of said project and shall give the town manager status reports of the project on a regular basis. The town manager shall keep the Town Council advised on these status reports. The committee may make recommendations to Town Council on any phase of said project." I'm going to come back to the word "may." Then it says, "Upon completion of the project, committee shall present a written report back to the Town Council on overall status of the project, including its finances, warranties, and other related information." I see the Town Council is having its fingerprints all over this and even the word "may" has been construed by our Supreme Court in certain contexts to mean "shall" or to be mandatory. I'm not saying whoever wrote this ordinance, and it could have been me, necessarily had that...
Probably was.
Fortunately, I have to revisit a lot of my own deficiencies, but, I mean, every single paragraph involves the Town Council and I think, from a practical point of view and from a practice point of view, the past practice may have been to pretty much let the permanent project building committee do their own thing. I wouldn't know, but that's why I think I sort of tried to answer it in the sense that it's whatever you want it to be. This language...this language could certainly be read that they have a very short leash. So it's 73-6 of your code.
Uh huh.
And I don't...if you're dealing with a roof, I mean, I don't know that you need the same...you need the same degree of accountability as you would for a whole school.
Right.
But it's up to...you know, we've got problems with roofs.
As Rose stated, like, I can remember going to a lot of meetings in the beginning when MBIS was kind of finishing up and the only thing that kind of troubled me was it seemed like the change orders came in after the work was already done at times. And I understand the construction world. I mean, a lot of times you have to make that decision, you can't just stop construction. But in the same token, there should be some transparency and somebody watching that. And they do a great job on permanent project. I just think maybe the system needs to be looked at or, I don't know, maybe a clerk of the work or somebody watching, you know, the project, looking out for the interest of the taxpayer and...
I see the roofs because they're always a problem. It seems...
Well, technically, I mean, not technically, but the same ordinance provides that the town manager and the mayor are ex officio members of that committee. So it's going to be hard not to know what's happening when it happens or before it happens. And so that may...so that may basically cover your situation.
I don't think your makeup on the permanent project building committee in terms of membership has changed all that much. I think there's some folks that have...
Yeah, they've been there.
...several projects.
Yeah.
Though I would think, you know, they got to a point where, let's just say this 2.8 million, I mean, TDS roof project and something came up where it was something significant that I think would bring back the council to report out. Lucky, you know, not on wood, it's been...the last roof project went very well. We're hoping to have the same luck in the next one, but yeah, it's just keeping a close eye on that and you're right. I mean, things pop up, things happen that you need to...
One of the minutes finished for the permanent project building committee has got to be done by the next day or something, right?
Motions have to be filed within 48 hours and minutes have to be posted within seven days, which Lisa gets down.
The thing is, when you get a hold of the minutes, maybe you should shoot them out to us as soon as you get them.
Yeah, right.
This way we know what's going on, what's coming down the pipe.
Could become part of the package.
Right. I think that would be a good idea. This way we're informed before or at the same time they are, so we don't have any surprises.
I think that, you know, not tonight, and we don't have a big project going on and, you know, on a roof, you know, I don't know what change order could come up, but I think there should be a threshold on it and that the, you know, where the Town Council is the body that has to raise the taxes to fund it, I don't think that we should hand a project to someone and then have them be able to go like, I don't know, above 25,000 or something on a change order on a project. Or maybe it should be spelled out in the beginning of the project that, all right, we're spending $10 million and here you go, guys, do it. If something arises...and here's the thing, working in construction my whole life, guess what? Every contractor knows you have the change order signed before you do the work because it could always be voted down. And whether it's a homeowner or a town, you know, you're not doing the work without the change order signed. And I know in these school projects and town projects, they love to tell you that, oh, we had to make this decision right then and then...no. If the contractor knows he has to have a signed change order, like every construction job in the world, they're going to have it in a timely matter and have it before the 11th hour.
Or it's going to cost them money.
Or it's going to cost them money. So, you know, it doesn't hold water that you got to make a decision at 11:59 at night or the sky's over. I live it every day, you know? That's why you see all these big contractors with, they got like their, you know, 50-foot yacht and then they got their hunt and the name of its contract and their 150-foot boat that they're hauling behind it is called change order. So anyway, you know, I don't see it as an issue on a two to $3 million job, but I think if you get into a 50, 60 million thing, the Town Council's in the future, should say, here you go, but, you know, this isn't a ticket to spend. And we are going to hold you to a, you know, any major change order over X amount of dollars is going to come before the Town Council.
Well, the thing is, it's really our face that's on every project in this town.
I agree.
And we're responsible for it, so...
We got to raise the money to pay for it.
And, you know, Ben, that's a good point. I mean, right now, with the projects going on, like the bathrooms and so forth, it's a board of ed project.
Right.
But how much, you know, does...are we informed about it or no? I mean, I think we funded around 180 to do...
118 for the bathroom.
Right. Well, they're just redoing bathrooms. It's not like they're doing the house.
No, I know.
Well, the 118 is now 429.
Right.
So...
How did you get...
Yeah, there was a...
So before you speak too much, you just need to know all the...
These are nice bathrooms, huh?
Yeah.
So they have not awarded any bids for the bathrooms.
So I guess maybe...
Because they don't have the money.
No kidding?
We didn't give them that much.
We need the lines of communication open because they are town buildings and, you know, I don't know if everyone got the...everyone should have gotten the email about, you know, the ADA versus non-ADA to get the...
Reimbursement.
...reimbursement. And, you know, I didn't know everyone's...
It's going to be a conversation that you have to decide which way to go on that.
Right, I mean, that needs to happen.
Right, yeah. And we're scheduled for the 9th.
June 9.
June 9, 5:30. And meet with the Board of Ed and the council to hammer that out, which way is the best course of action, what strategy you want to take. You've been invited.
Good.
I think, I think, you know, we're almost to the point where, you know, they're all saying that, you know, we need this high school rebuilt. So I doubt that we're going to, even if we rebuild the high school to new in, I don't know, pick a year, whenever, you're not...if you're going to spend a half a million dollars on bathrooms, let's make them ADA. I mean, I doubt any architect is going to move a bathroom on a remodel to new school. And so, you know, I think that we...and I guess, you know, since the whole council's having a meeting...
Well, the whole council's invited. It's going to be posted.
You know, we've got to...we've got to...and not only that, if you read the email, then apparently if it was ADA compliant, they'd be reimbursable from the state and we'd get, you know, I don't know, 30, 40, 50% money back. So, and if the only thing, the way I read the email was, the only thing was that the door size was wrong, cut a hole and make the right sized door, you know? And then get the money back from the state. The doors will be more than free, you know? And definitely, but maybe are we going...it started out to remodel a few bathrooms. Are we getting ahead of this and does it need...does the school need an architect that knows what he's doing with the state?
Well, if we're going to go for reimbursement, you need an architect.
And, right, but does he have to look at the whole thing and say, okay, we're going to do the bathrooms, or you know what, this bathroom's out of the wrong place, so we're not going to do that bathroom because it's going to be eliminated? And I think that you start the process of getting this thing, you know, gone through. Because we certainly don't want to put money into a bathroom that's going to be torn down in five years.
Right.
Yeah, why would we put money into something that will not be ADA compliant and then keep it?
Yeah, I don't...that's wrong. That's wrong this day and age, especially for a town and for a half a million dollars.
Right.
So, anyway, we'll...
We'll discuss it out to B.O.
So for the roof project, just so that we're clear, because at their building committee meeting, they can do change orders if something comes up, right?
Yeah, I mean...
On the project, you're keeping it, okay.
Yeah, I mean, it's business. I was just...
Okay.
Yeah, business as usual.
Are we okay with the sage green as well?
Yes.
Yeah, good.
Did anyone like the gray? I mean, who?
I don't know. Gray's...I'm sorry. It's the gray that matches the elementary school.
10 miles away.
I like sage green better.
Yeah.
Yeah, this is like dirty.
Okay.
Sage green or gray? Champagne. Well, that's on the expensive side.
There you go.
You got to stick to the left, that's the cheaper.
No bubbles along.
Okay. Does anyone else have anything on permanent project? All right, Item B, Economic Development Commission?
Yes, the Economic Development Commission met last night. The proposals are in, or one proposal is in. The RFP closed on Friday afternoon. We had one submission from Center Plan and presented that to the commission to begin the technical review last night and walked them through that, some of the issues. Again, met with early today, asked Brooke Sacco to come in for his technical review as well in-house with Carrie and Kurt and staff to go through that. EDC is going to meet again on the 11th and I think we have your recommendation in terms of what they see. But basically, you know, going through this, their concerns are that as we went through the process and the threat, that components of green space or open space and accessibility remain a high priority as well as the architectural design concepts. So this is, you know, a starting point, it's our one and only one, but in talking around and talking with professionals in the field, they're a legitimate player, developer, very active within Connecticut. There are several references you will see in this pack. I encourage you all to take it home and read it thoroughly, but you'll see two projects in New Haven. The project Hartford, the Rocketts Stadium project, a high-profile project in Hartford they've been assigned to. Phase two of the stores for Mansfield Partnership Downtown Partnership Plan in University of Connecticut, and they're in phase two construction. The company is doing that one as well. And a few others, their headquarters is in Middletown. There's some reference to the site, project work they've done there. It's thorough, it's technical, it's complete. So I encourage you to do that and I guess can defer, if we like, to later on in the agenda to talk about the selection process and what I see going forward. Jan is...Finch is chair is here as well, could certainly comment on the meeting last night and how excited they are about this proposal. So I think we'll get to no questions, we'll just, we'll save it until we get to the item under new business.
Okay.
Or I should say, old business.
All right. Anyone have any further discussion before we move on? Okay, Item C, Park and Recreation?
Their next meeting is June 15.
Item D, Police Commission?
The next meeting is June 8. A couple of things I'd like to bring up, but it's becoming, one thing that's becoming an issue, and a parking ticket appeal comes to the Town Council and the person has sent a letter which does not attend, that individual does not know our decision. As a result, a couple of people have gotten the second letter, which ends up being a rather nasty letter from the police department telling the person that, you know, pay up, and I think it doubles the fine, they're going to get a warrant and arrest. So I think it behooves us to remember that, Mike, that we have to send a letter. If the person sends a letter here, doesn't come to the meeting, they don't know...
The outcome.
...that the outcome was and that they were denied. So that is one issue that has come up. The other thing is the accident...
Uh, the next meeting is June eighth. A couple of the things I'd like to bring up, uh, is becoming, one thing that's become an issue, and, um, a parking ticket appeal comes to the town council, and the person has sent a letter which does not attend, that individual does not know our decision. As a result, a couple of people have gotten the second letter, which ends up being a rather nasty letter from the police department telling the person that, you know, pay up, and I think it doubles the fine, they're going to get a warrant and arrest. So I think it behooves us to remember that, Mike, that we have to send a letter. If the person sends a letter here, doesn't come to the meeting, they don't know.
The outcome.
That the out, what the outcome was, and that they were denied, so that, that is one issue that has come up. Um, the other thing is the accident reduction program, that, that will be discussed on Monday, that Anthony sent out to us today an email, Police Commission to look at. And the last thing I'd like to report, I think it's a very nice thing for North Branford, the, um, State Police Commission Association, Police Commission Association of Connecticut, the chair now is John Lindolfi, and the president is Dave Wombo, so that, kudos to North Branford for having a leadership, uh, state organization.
Okay. Okay. Um, item E, Fire Commission, uh, they're meeting this Thursday, and I know they're working diligently, uh, the fire chief on the C Med, which we'll touch upon, um, later. Um, item F, Town Planning Goals Subcommittee?
Yeah, the committee, uh, met on the eighteenth of May, we met with the fire chief and Lieutenant Rube, uh, with the, with them, as we've been doing with other departments, we are talking about their needs, looking forward to the future, you know, let's look at ten years, let's look at the needs, so hopefully in the, in the future, when we have our budget meetings, we have a better handle on what kind of, in advance, what some of the needs are and where, what direction we're going. Um, our next meeting is Monday, June eighth, and we're meeting with the superintendent of schools.
And it said six o'clock rather than five?
It said six o'clock, not five. And, uh, or is, do you have any done, I don't have the minutes yet.
Oh, I, yeah, I just forgot to sign, I got them down.
Okay, thank you, Mary. Um, let's see here, item G, Board of Education, Town Council, Communications Subcommittee?
Um, our next meeting is, we're off for the summer, so it's on.
Item Eight, Town Managers Report. Item A, C Med Update?
Yep. Uh, they've made progress, group, um, here's a, a handout in terms of the latest, um, spreadsheet, so if you will, in terms of proposals, um, we met actually, uh, yesterday was the last meeting, um, the, the group of eight is what's left of C Med, uh, towns that remain, um, and the eight towns, uh, remaining voted to, uh, proceed with a, a new proposal from A M R, uh, and not Southwest or Bridgeport. So, some of the reasons that, when we got into discussion with Southwest, they were talking about approval from their board, uh, in order to take C Med or absorb C Med, and their caution to the director and, and asking, tasking him, uh, to say that any arrangement would have to include a hundred thousand dollars in escrow, uh, for potential transition costs in terms of technical issues that may arise. Uh, so that gave pause to the group of eight towns, uh, that that's not exactly something that was upfront, uh, from, from the beginning, uh, but it came more from the Southwest Board of Directors, in order to protect their interests, not knowing what would happen through the transition. The other, uh, issue actually, Chief Seward had raised while in the meeting, was the continuity of service in terms of the transition itself from flipping the switch on July first, and really having, uh, personnel available, um, to work through the first couple of weeks in there, and there were some issues because of the distance, uh, in the operations center in New Haven versus Bridgeport, and getting personnel, uh, to be able to staff, uh, that location became an issue. They couldn't guarantee, uh, that they were gonna be able to find enough bodies, or would cost them, uh, additional or cost, uh, C Med additional money. And there was higher costs involved versus, uh, A M R's proposal. So A M R, uh, sharpened the pencil, put together a, a proposal, um, that the, a group of eight, um, and for us, uh, for North Branford, um, looks like the best fit for our town versus, even though we were looking at Valley Shore, Valley Shore was only gonna give us the medical patch, A M R is going to give us all three core services, the medical patch, uh, mass casualty, and mutual aid. So we'll get all three of those, uh, services, and technically they have a superior communications network, um, and won't cost as much as it would for Southwest with phone lines, the technical, uh, circuits and, uh, switches and things of that nature. So, um, at this, at this point in the, in the discussion, I, I certainly highly recommend that we, uh, go with A M R, uh, I believe Chief Seward and I are in sync with that, uh, I value his opinion and, and he figures, uh, you know, he's confident, uh, in that decision as well, and it would be, um, all three services versus the Valley Shore, even though Valley Shore would technically be a little bit, uh, cheaper, we're still ahead of the game, uh, in terms of the spreadsheet showing you what we had paid in the past, what we would, uh, what we currently paying with the thirty percent reduction, and what would we be, uh, under A M R. So we're dropping from about sixteen thousand dollars a night, under the current proposal. Uh, so there's still, there's, that's sort of the transition piece in terms of operational wise, uh, how we do that, and now we still, we have to go through the unwinding of C Med, and, uh, that's gonna take some time, uh, attorney Bill Ryan is actually the one assigned, is working with the, the units, negotiating the, uh, pension liability, uh, issues that we have to do there, and I'm hoping, uh, when we meet, again, we're meeting again on the eleventh, uh, by that time we'll have a draft, some type of M O U with the towns, uh, that are gonna go with, with A M R, that we can get to, to John for a review for the meeting on the sixth, our next meeting on the sixteenth. Uh, so we're hoping to pull all of that, uh, together and, uh, look at the transition, and, uh, ultimately what our liability and costs on a per-town basis, what's going to be for us on that pension liability. So, all of that has to be figured out, um, in the, in, in this month, in the next four weeks.
Now with the A M R, they're a private company.
Correct.
So we're not gonna have any, um, pension liability or insurance.
Right.
We don't have any capital expenditure.
Right, it's just, it's just going, it's just gonna be the fee for service.
And then, how, uh, how many year contract do they?
We're, we're, we're structuring on a, on a, on a one-year, and then see, see how it goes, as a group of, a block of eight, if you will, coming into the, into the system.
Cause in the beginning, you know, you get the teaser rate, which is.
Right, right, and that was, that was raised by other chiefs.
And then, you know what happens after that?
Other members, you're right, they had the teaser rate, and then it jacks up, and we would have to, um, look at that in terms of language.
It wouldn't benefit to go, try to go to a three-year, or?
Well, again, I'm not sure how A M R's gonna respond, but they, they talk about just in terms of one-year transition, and then, and then go multi-year after that, I think.
We get the teaser rate, but we don't know what kind of service we'll get either.
Oh, we're pretty well-staffed.
A M R should be pretty good.
A M R is pretty well-staffed, I'd be more concerned with.
The rate's going up.
Yeah.
Yeah. I, I will say also, um, that, you know, part of the technical, one little pieces, uh, we've negotiated and talked about the, uh, equipment at Parsons Hill, and I think the chief mentioned it last, last meeting as well.
Right.
That, that bodes well, because it hap- happens to serve us, and, and in the future, let's just say things don't work out with A M R, but, uh, we, we look at Valley Shore, you know, Rick Darren and the staff there have been excellent in terms of, you know, working with us, and, and said, you know, should that change, anything change with A M R, we'd always look at Valley Shore a year out, two years out, three years out, so there, there are options for, for North Branford, and then, of course, it gives them the opportunity to build, Valley Shore, to build their infrastructure and their services, as they take on Branford, uh, Guilford, and Madison, at the same time we're going to A M R, so I think we'll be okay.
And.
Plus with a one-year contract, we'll have some leverage on them, because we still have freedom to do what we want after a year.
There's two other out there.
If it doesn't work out, we'll see, see you later.
Right. What's the cost on the nine-one-one call? Cause I know that was a, a part of this.
The, um, in terms of the formula, how they're gonna do it?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think they get more of the detail, I'm not sure, um, where the, where the detail is on, on that, but I think it's, I wanna say forty cents is the number that remains in my head, but I'll get confirmation on, on that. Uh, that might've been the old C Med model, and, and that's why, part of the reason, there was a complicated formula in C Med, and obviously the, the, the structure and the carrying costs that they had with union and liability and so forth, uh, so, you know, just expensive.
Right.
And when we go into, uh, Valley Shore, uh, again, that was the, it was just the, uh, per-call flat rate, and then, uh, the, uh, a simple formula, and, and the rate and the credit from the state as well.
What about the technology, is it still the same in terms of the speed of the, of transmission, et cetera, is, is that gonna change?
Well, uh, I can't really speak to that, other than, um, they are, their equipment is far more advanced than the current C Med, uh, system, and what, what they have in terms of T one lines and fiber lines.
Yes, I meant, those are the lines they're using.
Yeah.
So that they have more advanced.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, I'm understanding, yes. They're private, of course, they're more advanced.
So, I'll report back again on the sixteenth, and, and, again, uh, optimistically we'll have a, a document by that time, um, to, to, to look at, or perhaps, uh, in terms of how we're gonna structure the, uh, services, or the agreement or, uh, M O U.
Item B, Setting Joint Meeting with the Board of Education, Permanent Project Building Committee, uh, I believe the Town Council, on the future, um, of school projects.
Yeah, we're gonna piggyback on the, uh, Board of Ed's, um, meeting on June ninth at five thirty, that's what.
Where would that be located, Mike?
Um, in their main.
At, at their conference.
At their conference room.
Well, well, I mean, they're, they, they have a budget Subcommittee meeting scheduled for five thirty on June ninth, um, and so I guess this is what we have talked about, is trying to peggyback, and this is, and Vinnie, our state rep, Vinnie Candeloro, has also been invited to this meeting, correct?
Correct, yeah.
Um, so it's, we're just peggybacking on their.
On June ninth.
On June ninth, it's a Tuesday, cause they, their monthly meeting this month is on June eleventh, it's the second Tuesday instead of the third Tuesday.
Mike, if possible, I think we should maybe shoot an email out to the council next week just as a reminder to everyone, that way, cause everyone's busy during, so. Okay. Um, item nine, Community Events and.
Oh, yeah, if we, I'm sorry, if we could just back up under the report, just as a, a more of an F Y I, um, that, um, I'm in, in the, um, employment mode, hiring mode, if you will, just to give you a, an idea that, um, you know, Pam is leaving, so that process and it's later on in the, in the agenda, but beyond her position, um, trying to move to get the, uh, position that's funded for Fran that's been, been, been put off for some time, is part-timer, and then come July first, we've got two part, uh, part-time for the rec, as you know, that you approved, uh, for July first, and then, um, the part-time , uh, Z E O, uh, position is coming up July first, and then we're gonna have two, uh, early retirements in public works, uh, full-time, uh, labor, so, uh, there's six positions I've gotta push through, uh, between now and then, and come July, so I just, I just wanted you to be aware that we'll be in application-taking mode for, for some time, and, uh, and search mode for rec, uh, director and so forth for June and July, so, this is a, that's an F Y I. That's it, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mike. Uh, item nine, Community Events and Presentations.
Um, I would just like to make a comment about the Memorial Day Parade, um, hats off to Katie Trainer, the band director at North Branford High School, um, this was the first year that the band marched in their new uniforms, um, they did a great job, they looked great, um, thank you to everyone in the community who has helped them with their fundraising, they are now able to compete, um, and they, I know they went down to Washington, D.C., they just recently competed also, um, up at, a competition up at Six Flags, but the band looked excellent, and Katie did a great job, um, with them, and this year the parade was back on the North Branford side on Route eighty, and I thought it was very well-attended, um, the people along the parade route and having Route eighty open and marching along there, um, was actually nice, and the weather was great that day, so it was a nice event.
We had the unexpected flyover.
Right, yes we did, yeah, so.
Yeah, thanks to all that put together, they did a really great job. Um, I'm just gonna, I'm not sure if everyone got this, but I did receive a letter from the North Branford Land Conservation Trust, um, the North Branford Land Conservation Trust, Inc. will hold its annual meeting on Wednesday, June third, at the Stanley T. Williams Community Center in Northford, it starts at six P.M., enjoy some light refreshments and convers- conversation with other members, neighbors, guests of the land trust. At six thirty P.M., our guest speaker, Scott Williams, Ph.D., scientist from the Connecticut Agricultural Experiment Station, will speak about the surprising interactions of ticks, deer, Lyme disease, and invasive plants, so prevalent in the Connecticut woodlands. Dr. Williams' presentation, Ticked Off, is appropriate and timely, everyone is welcome, so encourage your neighbors, friends to come, and it's free. A brief business meeting will follow, the presentation including an election to fill a vacancy on the Board of Directors, Bob Regan, a long-serving board member, has stepped down as founding member of the North Branford Land Trust, he has served continuously in several capacities on the board for forty-seven years, he helped keep the organization alive during its dark ages of the late nineteen eighties to nineteen nineties, and first decade of the twenty-first century. I hope to see you at the meeting, thanks for supporting an organization that leads and works to protect our open space in town. Otto Schaefer, Secretary, North Branford Land Conservation Trust Incorporated. Okay. Anyone else? Okay, item ten, Citizen Statements, Petitions, Correspondence. Okay, item eleven, Resignations and Appointments. Item A, Appointment, Alice Lear to the Ethics Committee, replacing Michael Burton, term to expire, top twelve thirty-one, two thousand seventeen.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move the appointment of Alice Lear, who only drives in the transfer to the Ethics Committee, replacing Michael Burton, her term to expire on twelve thirty-one twenty seventeen.
Second.
Moved by Deputy Mayor Wentworth, seconded by Councilor Angeloni, roll call.
Mayor Candeloro?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Wentworth?
Yes.
Councilor Angeloni?
Yes.
Councilor Armin?
Yes.
Councilor Caprio?
Yes.
Councilor Diamond?
Yes.
Councilor Fawnin?
Yes.
Councilor Rowe?
Yes.
Item twelve, Unfinished Business Discussion and Action. Item A, Updates to the Divine Benefit Plan, I believe this is still tabled. Item B, Formation of Public Safety and Emergency Communication Committee, Public Hearing.
We have to set a public hearing, is that?
We have to set it down for a public hearing.
Okay.
Do you wanna, um, is that at seven, do you wanna do a seven-thirty timeframe, um, after, specifically after the start of the meeting?
Yeah, that's fine. There's enough time, yeah, yeah, notify.
Yeah, you wanna do it, uh, for the sixteenth, yeah.
Sixteenth?
Right, for the sixteenth at seven-thirty.
I'd just set the public hearing for that particular item, on the seventeenth, June, uh, June?
June sixteenth.
June sixteenth, I'm sorry, at seven thirty P.M.
Moves by Deputy Mayor Wentworth, seconded by Councilor Angeloni, roll call.
Mayor Candeloro?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Wentworth?
Yes.
Councilor Angeloni?
Yes.
Councilor Armin?
Yes.
Councilor Caprio?
Yes.
Councilor Diamond?
Yes.
Councilor Fawnin?
Yes.
Councilor Rowe?
Yes.
Item C, Request to Change Membership of Hazardous Waste Recycling Committee From Twelve to Nine, Tabled for May nineteenth, two thousand fifteen, Public Hearing.
Can we do that on the same day?
We can, do, if you wanna, you might wanna discuss it a little bit here, cause you just got it the last minute, and, um, I know you, you may wanna review it, but, um, as the item says on the agenda, the council asked me to just make an ordinance or amendment to an ordinance reducing the membership from twelve to nine, the problem is that there is no committee recognized or codified in our code, uh, we do have, um, and, we do have an ordinance entitled Solid Waste, but, um, there is no committee, there is no purpose involved, uh, it talks about transporting garbage, it does mention, uh, it defines bulky waste, but doesn't discuss when it, how it's to be picked up, or when it's to be picked up, or any of that, there's no mention of hazardous waste at all, uh, which is a main responsibility to this committee, um, so what I had to, what I did was, I, um, So, what I had to, what I did was I took the existing ordinance and tried to stay within the, it's a very awkwardly-formatted ordinance, it's divided up into articles, which one thing I would do, which is easy, aft, if and when we, you agree on what you want to have in it, reformat it in terms of a normal numbering and alphabetizing. This is kind of all over the lot. In fact, rather than get crazy, I created a section right on the first page of one ninety-three dash zero, otherwise you'd be seeing crossouts just about for everything. This is the most important piece, this is the recognition of a committee, and it does mention nine members, I just inserted two-year terms, that they be citizens, although town officers or employees could also be appointed by the mayor with the approval of the town council, and that basically their job is to, this committee's job is to, it's an advisory committee, any committee that I am asked to do, I'm instinctively going to propose it as an advisory committee to the town council. And its job is to, you know, make recommendations and studies and report to the town council in an effort to promote the public safety and health and welfare and preserve the resources when dealing with solid and hazardous wastes, and also to promote recycling. So, all that is now specified in greater detail. But what you're, if you see regular print, that's, I had this retyped, the regular print is the actual ordinance, only the bold print shows the change. So, you know, each one of these articles has a different fine, if you violate it, that should all be sort of consolidated. But there's enough here, if you're comfortable, in submitting it to a public hearing, because the public hearing may, the whole purpose of that is to make changes that may be advanced by members of the public. So, I know at one point, the council wanted to have both of these, that is, the communications ordinance and this ordinance, go in the same day, or go in the same meeting, two separate public hearings, but at least get them done at the same time. You may still want to do that. One other thing that I would point out, there's, you know, hazardous waste is defined for the first time, and also, the experience that we had with propane, that was a private business situation, but it is possible that somebody may want to come into town and establish a dump for the purpose of depositing hazardous materials. That's not some, that's something that is addressed in this ordinance for the first time, and it states that no hazardous waste facility shall be operated in North Branford without the permission of the North Branford Town Council. Such permission shall not be granted until after a public hearing, the North Branford Town Council makes findings of fact in its minutes that there is no undue danger to the citizens of North Branford, and that the operator of such facility has the ability or has posted sufficient bond or other security to operate properly and eventually close such facilities. That could be the next potential matter of great public concern. So, if you, you know, I could, you can go through this, the changes are probably not more than a half a page, but they, they actually establish a commission, excuse me, a committee that deals with solid waste, hazardous waste, other unacceptable material, recycling, and bulky waste, and it allows the formation of this committee in a proper way. The previous meeting, I think the town manager from the town clerk furnished you with some minutes of previous meetings of the, of this committee, and then there was, there was seems to be large absences in between, and some of the, some of the predecessor town attorneys, at least one of them commented that, you know, we ought to, this really should be done by an ordinance, and I agree. I think that's, I think that's the way the town council speaks. We make, we make procedural motions among ourselves for matters on the agenda, but when we, when we speak, we speak by way of making an ordinance generally. So, I offer this to you for your view, and if it's your pleasure, you can set it for a public hearing in two weeks or whatever.
I think that the Hazardous Waste Committee originally had fewer members, but people weren't coming to the meeting, so they asked for more members to get, and now they've got too many members, and they don't come either, so that's why they're trying to get it down to reasonable.
Right, well, you can, you know, I didn't allot a great deal of time, frankly, to do this ordinance, because all you asked me to do was to amend something or to make something go from twelve members to nine, until I found out there wasn't any committee, there wasn't any subject matter in the ordinance that this committee supposedly dealt with, such as hazardous waste. And so, I took the opportunity to work on an ordinance that we already had in there that covered some of the area and shored it up, and I think as a result, at some point after the public hearing, you'll have a more defined committee and know what its purposes are.
Looking at all the things that are in here, I think it's better we put it on a separate meeting, maybe we can put it on the.
I don't, I would agree with that, to be honest with you.
Because I think it's going to take a while.
Because you're getting it on short notice here tonight, you've had the other.
It's not that, I just, I think it'll take more time at the meeting, you know, than trying to flip the two of them together. I thought it was going to be shorter than this.
Yeah, you might also, what, you might also invite members of the de facto hazardous waste committee, because they may, through whatever their participation has been to date, have some ideas that ought to be included or excluded.
I'd like to make a motion that we have a public hearing on, what's the second date of the next council meeting?
Well, after the sixteenth, you go into summer mode, that would be July seventh.
July seventh, maybe on July seventh, we can put it on that, or you mean?
Isn't it the second Tuesday of July?
It's not the first, or the third, it's the second Tuesday.
For July and August, I thought it was the second Tuesday of July. So, the seventh wouldn't be the second Tuesday.
It's the second, we only need once in July and August.
Do you have the calendar?
Yeah, the seventh.
Fourteenth, twenty-first.
That is, well, that's, that's the first Tuesday.
The seventh is the first Tuesday.
Right.
What's the second Tuesday?
Well, it says the second, what we adopted was the seventh of July.
That's the second Tuesday?
No, it's the first.
It's the first Tuesday.
I was telling you that's what we adopted.
Right.
So, that's the.
We're going to have it as a special meeting then, unless we have it on the seventh, and then we can have any.
Well, no, that's what we, if we adopted that as our meeting.
It indicates in the schedule that, you know, they know, when you prepare the schedule, that there's an asterisk, and the asterisk says indicates deviation from normal first and third Tuesday, and it does say July seventh.
And that's the first Tuesday in July, yep?
Right.
Why don't we just have it the seventh and?
Well, I'm kind of happy to, I'm just like, who does?
Well, we can cancel that meeting, make a special meeting, but if we have it there already, we get there.
Right.
So, yeah, so next meeting, we could have an item on the sixteenth to move to public hearing on the seventh.
Correct.
Okay. Or, I mean, you can do it now, if that's your motion, that's fine.
Why don't we do it now, so we won't have to worry about it later?
Okay.
The seventh at seven-thirty?
I just have one thing with discussion, if you don't mind. I don't know, Michael, if you can answer this, or Anthony, on the scrap metal and various items, when people are bringing in that scrap metal and it gets scrapped, where does the dollar value go? Does that go into the general fund, or?
I think those are tipping. You mean, were they recycled?
No.
Does Franny?
I'm not sure.
All right. Because if we're, if we have a dumpster set up down there, the town really should be reaping whatever scrap value, because as far as people bring in a dumpster, they'll bring it free. And I'll tell you right now, if you're getting nickel, brass, copper, you know, we could be bringing in anywhere from two to five thousand dollars, and that, you know, could buy a lot of work boots or gloves.
You're saying have a dumpster like at Public Works all the time?
Oh, yeah. I mean, right now, scrap steel's down, but, you know, any of these other metals or commodities that are changing constantly, and I've seen the dumpsters there, and I'll bet you we're generating revenue that we're giving away, and we could be utilizing that, I think, for, I don't know, Public Works or, you know, in the general fund or, you know.
I think, now that you mentioned, rang a bell when you said booths, I believe it does go, Public Works maintains an account, the money goes in there, and they buy uniforms and supplies for the Public Works out of that, instead of paying tax dollars.
I thought we talked about that a few years back.
You're correct.
All right, thanks, yeah, okay. So, I have a motion from Deputy Mayor Wentworth, I just needed a second.
For me, or July seventh at seven-thirty?
Yep.
Second.
Moved by Deputy Mayor Wentworth, seconded by Councilor Angeloni, roll call.
Mayor Candeloro?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Wentworth?
Yes.
Councilor Angeloni?
Yes.
Councilor Armin?
Yes.
Councilor Caprio?
Yes.
Councilor Diamond?
Yes.
Councilor Fawnin?
Yes.
Councilor Rose?
Yes.
Would anyone have any issues with jumping to thirteen D, so that are, are very quiet library director could then go home?
Sure.
I mean, it's going to make our night any longer.
Yeah, that's fine.
Yes.
Do we need a motion to do that, or can we just jump?
No, we can just move it up.
All right. Let's go to item thirteen D, request of Library Board of expenditure of trust funds and donated funds, two thousand fifteen and two thousand sixteen. Good evening, Mr. Hall.
Good evening.
How are you?
Thank you very much. This is actually very similar to something that we asked of you last year. It's making our spending of the gift funds and the trust funds, private money spent by the library, more in accord with the ordinances of the town, but avoiding having the council having to take a separate vote every time we buy something from a gift fund. So, it's very similar to what you did last year. We increased it a little bit because we had an increase in receipts of gifts, and also it supports the children's programs that we're trying to improve, but it's a very modest increase that we wanted to spend from that. I don't know if there's any questions on what we're asking. Basically, it's approval in advance of a general level of spending from gift funds. Now, just a little, a little background, previous to this, previous to last year, we would, we spent those funds, I mean, it was all done properly, it was done with the correct paperwork through the finance department and the town manager, but the council never actually took a direct vote on it, and the ordinance of the town really asked that the council would do that. And so, in the interest of trying to make things work closer to the way they should, that's why we had proposed this change. It doesn't really change what we do, but what it does do is recognize the council's authority over what we do.
So, you need both of those motions?
The most, the.
Those from the library board.
When you look at the motions from the library board that are on here, the one from March twenty-sixth was actually part of the budget proposal that the library makes, and that we've done every year, as far as the main expenditures from the trust funds, we've always proposed that simultaneous with the budget. But it's the second one here that is relatively new, that you only have done last year, and then we're asking for this year. And that would be the library board motion from May twentieth, that the library board recommended to the town manager and town council the expenditure of up to seven thousand dollars from the Friends of the Library Fund, the Lois Flaherty Fund, and the General Gift Fund during the two thousand fifteen to two thousand sixteen fiscal year. Expenditures will be for library collection items, children's programs, and adult programs. The change from last year, there was no Lois Flaherty Fund last year. This was a generous donation made by a citizen to the library department during this past fiscal year of five thousand dollars. And we're not proposing to spend it all at once. We are actually planning to keep most of it in reserve for a special project that might come up. But at the same time, when somebody gives a donation like that, it's nice to be able to use some of it periodically, so that we can report back to them, hey, here's some good ways that we're using your money. So, if we supported a children's program or a special collection or something like that, it would be, but the Lois Flaherty Fund is a, is a new fund.
So, from May twenty, one on the second page is what you're.
Yes, that's right.
So, you want to go from sixty-six to seven thousand?
Yes.
I'll move that motion.
I'll second it.
Moved by Deputy Mayor Wentworth, seconded by Councilor Armin, roll call.
Mayor Candeloro?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Wentworth?
Yes.
Councilor Angeloni?
Yes.
Councilor Armin?
Yes.
Councilor Caprio?
Yes.
Councilor Diamond?
Yes.
Councilor Fawnin?
Yes.
Councilor Rose?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks for changing the agenda. The meetings are always interesting, you know.
I saw you fold the seat back there, so, like, okay, Bob needs to go home.
Have a good evening, sir. Okay. Let's see, item D, formation of selection committee for redevelopment of fifteen ninety-nine Foxen Road, North Branford, tabled from the May fifth, two thousand fifteen.
Yep, this is all about the, the one proposal we have, so there aren't five or six, there aren't three or four, and there aren't two, there's one.
Didn't we mention that, like, we were just going to hold council?
Yeah, the whole council will serve, can serve as.
Right, that's fine.
Simple as that.
Good enough for me.
And I put together just a sort of a revised memo, just to kind of give you an idea of what I'm suggesting is, is that in the context of what we put in the RMP, we had outlined a closure deadline of May twenty-ninth, and then, and interview and presentations between June fourth and June eighteenth. So, I think it would be appropriate to have, or send out an invitation, or contact the developer, invite them to the council for the meeting on the sixteenth, to begin the process and do their first presentation, and we would basically interview the officers there, or the representatives from center plan, and begin to start the process of review and move towards, if you like what you hear, and you like the concept, and you get some more detail, that somewhere, you know, we can proceed, continue to proceed to give them preferred developer status. So, kind of outline the process of starting on the sixteenth, I'll be, I'll continue to do the technical review and the references, checks, and so forth, but I think we start with inviting them here and getting more detail to their concept and hearing about their business plan and model.
Stronger glasses.
When you, when everyone else reads this, did it look like they're offering to pay a million dollars for the land?
Generous, aren't they?
Yeah, there's quite a bit in, in there, and what we ask for in terms of, you know, responding to, giving us a conceptual idea, but there's not a whole lot of detail, I mean, essentially, let me give you an example, they, they put the plan down, you can, you can pull out the schematic, but they're showing thirty-nine thousand square feet in oriented in a block that shows about fourteen thousand square feet of retail, and that's broken down into a eleven thousand square foot unit, and then another four, another three thousand. And then, on the final piece on the end, they have four thousand reserved for a restaurant.
You're going to put a restaurant that big in North Branford in a way?
Well, and that's the thing, there's some, some things we have to review, and then second floor is the residential mixed-use component of this, of this project.
Those are all supposed to be one bedrooms, right?
Well, that's the thing, there's no detail. So, there's twenty-five, they're not saying yet whether, in this proposal, if they're studio or one bedrooms. So, it equates, if you look at the square footage, twenty thousand square feet, twenty-five units, that's somewhere about eight hundred square feet per unit, which is probably a studio or one bedroom. So, that fits with some of the, you know, conversations and development discussions we've had with Yale. They've included the green space, open space access.
we've had with, with Yale, they've included the green space, open space access in there, walking trail, and so now it's, it's talking to them about how much they can refine to what the town really wants to see in terms of the EDC's recommendation and the town council through the charrette process about how to make it look like it's going to be a, a vibrant little center in, in North Branford at 139 and Route 8, and not just slap something up there, you know, what kind of architectural design features are, do you, do you plan on doing, what kind of tenants are you talking about, what kind of, you know, residential units, are they all studio, are they all one bedroom, or what are you gonna do? So we begin the process on the 16th, and I think would be a, you know, the right way to go, invite them in.
Does the committee that used to work, maybe Kurt knows this, and I know, I think Mr. Greegan and Scott Small were on it, we had like an, an architectural approval committee or design review committee?
Right.
Does that, here's another one for John, does that committee even exist as a legal committee, and do they meet, and, I mean, I, I do think that it would be great to have them on something like this if you were gonna do it.
They were set up to review in the Norfolk and North Branford Town Design Districts, which this falls into, so...
Yeah.
They'd have involvement at some point, and I guess the question would, would you like to get them in early on versus...
There is a committee that's...
But, but that's under, they're set up to, to review the architecturalism and make recommendations, basically just playing a zoning commission. That, that's who they're really sort of working on there or advising, but there's no, I don't see any issue with it, if they're willing to get involved at, at this point, because certainly anything that's done there would come back before them.
Thank you.
Thank you. Kurt?
The assessment on that came back at, what, 1.8 or something like that?
No.
No.
The simple market, it wasn't a full-blown appraisal, but basically market analysis was about 800,000, change, something like that. And it's, you know, again, it's gonna be, I, I think what they're proposing is, is an outright purchase versus a, from a long-term ground lease, and part of what we get into is, you know, the, the purchase price or acquisition cost minus environmental, and there is gonna be, you know, there is indicated that there's still, you know, petroleum, nothing like PCBs or anything, but just petroleum, and we just don't know without a phase two, phase three, of what, how much the contamination is and whether remediation cost is, but I think it's something that we want, if we can, have the developer wrap in and take on the purchase price versus the town trying to do something, clean it up, then, then turn it over to, to the developer. So I think they...
What happened there?
There, there, there was a, I think, maybe it was a 2006, 2008 timeframe where in the first go-round, we had a phase one environmental study done for the site, and on the back corner of the old school, on the back building, there was identified as some type of petroleum spillage or something indicating it.
Was it just under an outdoor oil tank or something?
It could have remediated, I thought. No, not, not that I, I've seen any records that it was remediated. It was the old gas tank used to be over there, you know, just a very...
Yeah, I think you're right.
Gas tank.
So it'd be just, probably just surface.
But, I mean, I, if it was ever remediated, that... Well, I don't know what was remediated or not, so I don't think that... But it's, it's issue the one way or the other, fact, you know, from, from a document standpoint, if, if ahead of the game, if it got remediated, then we can document that. If not, there's gonna be some type of small surface-type identification or remediation to be done.
Well, we knew, we all, we, we knew there was, I'm sure there's lead in the...
Oh, in, in the building.
In the building.
Asbestos too.
Might have been before that, you know, we're probably selling it. So, so, you know, we aren't gonna decide it tonight, but I, I, you know, I still think that this council and maybe the townspeople have to decide, you know, do you sell it for a million dollars? You know, so, so, I mean...
Thing is, do we let it...
We go forward and say, well, right, I mean, you either gotta sell it for a million dollars, or you gotta knock the buildings down and build your park, you gotta do one or the other.
Right, and the thing is, if we sell it and develop it, and they bring a nice bunch of stores in there, it's gonna make Central have to either get their act together or go bankrupt. And then we're gonna get something new in Central coming on, and we're gonna have a nice little retail section in this end of town, that's, we're the only place we can basically have it. There's no other place, I mean, there's really not much development for businesses in this town. It's Route 80, basically, and that's it. So we have to focus on what our strong points are and do those, and, and hopefully turn things around.
Just as another point of interest, in that zone, the piece between 1599 and Central Plaza, that little triangle piece where the dentist's or doctor's office was, and there's developer interested and, and working on that site, that was the second proposal I thought we were going to have, said that they were indicated that they were interested once because they got started on that, that piece, and they were working and are working on something for that piece, when they heard about 1599 and doing their, you know, due diligence, so they weren't able to get something in, in time, so unfortunately, they're not part of this, but they will be looking at that, that property and doing something there.
Right, I mean, we gotta...
Potentially.
We gotta think about the tax dollars that's gonna bring in, the people that's gonna bring into town for all our businesses, and that, that is the move of the future as far as I'm concerned. If we put a park there, it's gonna cost us a million dollars instead of gaining a million in cash and tax dollars forever, and we have the 200, 300 acres over here that are like pure recreation land for people, we can do things there that'll be more of a park-like thing or walking trail thing than that little piece of land there. It's on Route 80, I mean, it's, it's the highway of the town.
Yeah, so I'd, I'd like to invite him in for the 16th.
Excuse me, Jan Finch.
Jan Finch, I'm the chairman now, the, no, the commission. We were very pleased with what we've gone over in this report, we only got it yesterday, so there's not, we haven't seen a lot, or talked about it terribly much yet. I think we've all, well, we would appreciate it if we could get a good, positive take on this. It's a good proposal, it's very much like what was proposed by the Yale Urban Study Group. There are a few things we would like maybe different, which we have a chance of discussing with the developer, and that's what would, with a presentation by him and a presentation by us at the same time, we would hopefully be able to tell him things that we would like to see there. If you, when you look through this, you'll see a few things you would like also. The company seems to be very solid, and from talking to people in this industry, they have a very good reputation. When you look through the book, I think you'll notice that, the proposal is put together very, very nicely, very complete, and we were all very, very satisfied with it. So it was only one proposal, but it seems to be a, a very good one. So I know the whole council was, I'm sorry, I can't see you over there, Dan, Dan knows most about this, and is, I'm sure, happy to see how it finally turned out. You know, we've put in a lot of time, and you've been talking now about the, having the town, you know, look at it and everything. We did have the two charrettes, we tried very, very hard to get the town involved in this, and both charrettes, they came up with the same idea, and it was basically what we did come up with. I know there are people, I think the only discontent was that people would love to see that as open space. I don't know, probably all of us would love to see a beautiful open park there, but I don't think it's in the cards, particularly at this time. So I think we can, this developer seems that he would bring in good clients, we don't know, we have no idea what he has planned with the buildings that he has put in that position, but that's the purpose of meeting with him and asking our questions and hopefully being able to give him some direction too. And we can always, we're talking about today at our, that we could, you can tell him, no, we don't want that, I mean, you can, you know, get out of it, but it's, I guess what I'm looking for is a positive outlook by you and see how it goes, and just hope that it really is something that will work out well, that he will agree with us and that we can proceed. So as far as a meeting, I'm a little concerned with, here in the meeting tonight, you're doing an awful lot on the 16th of July, I don't know how quickly you go through all the things you were talking about, but if we could arrange a meeting with this company, could they, do you ever meet early? I'd like, I don't want them, very frankly, to have to sit through a town council meeting, and this is a really, really important project, and if it's possible for you to meet early or to have it first on the agenda, it would be more, I would...
That can be done.
Like...
Well, I appreciate your concern, but we also have to deal with these people in a business manner, and they have to kind of, how do I wanna put this? They wanna make money off this project, and we want this project to go right, and we have to be able to negotiate with them, and, and I don't wanna say be afraid of them or whatever, or tiptoe around, but when you have business dealings, I mean, it's better to be straightforward and honest and, and, and right to each other, and this way you know where you stand right from the back. I think this is a good proposal, I'm for it, I would love to talk to these gentlemen, but as far as making special accommodations, I mean, that's fine and dandy, but we still have to kind of keep it a business relationship, we don't wanna give them like a preferred status or anything like that, you know?
Well, ordinarily, something like this would happen at a separate meeting, it would be something that would be set up with the town.
As far as I'm concerned, it won't take much to hammer out an, an agreement. I mean, it'd take time, but they have to know where we stand, and we have to know where they stand, and we find out if we can meet in the middle, hopefully, and hopefully we're, we don't even have to meet in the middle, everybody's happy.
Well, this is just giving them time to, you know, to present what, you know, to present their proposal to...
We're not negotiating with them.
Yeah, we're not, this isn't negotiation, they're just gonna show us their renderings and what they propose.
Right, yeah.
So we can...
I don't see anything wrong with having them...
On the top of the agenda, it's like, you know, I don't...
That's fine.
We should accommodate those people for that, you know, I mean, we can do that.
We're trying to get, at this, we will give them our ideas, they will give us...
Sure, I just don't, I don't like the idea of looking kind of, not desperate, but...
Oh, I don't, I don't think...
Right, I've been in business a long time, darling, I, I, I know how to deal with business, believe me.
How long would you anticipate their presentation, I mean, like, if we allotted them a half hour, so if we started at 6:30 and had them, like, allotted them a half hour from 6:30 to 7, still start...
It's never gonna finish in a half hour, I guarantee it.
Yeah, I think, you know, a half hour, depending on where your, your questions go, I mean, you, you haven't had a chance to digest, digest the proposal.
We are the committee, we just said earlier.
Right, right.
Right.
Would it not be to have a special meeting just dedicated to this?
That'd be fun, we'd make... That's even a better, that's a better idea.
I just started, I got...
That's a better idea, right?
And that's it, and that's the only business.
Yeah, yeah, that's fine, I think that's better.
And what, I, I understand what you're saying.
Right.
And by clouding it with a whole town council meeting, I think we should just focus on the business.
Good idea.
We were all just presented this proposal tonight.
We haven't even digested it at all.
And it's, it's got a lot of bells and whistles, and clearly they put some time and effort into it, this isn't a proposal to buy. You're taking an option. They've got a six-month due diligence period followed by a six-month contingency fulfillment period. That means they look for six months by putting up $20,000 with the title company, and they got another six months to get the PNZ approval and to determine whether or not there are any tendencies, tendencies or encumbrances on the property. They could tie up this property for a year, they got $20,000 in escrow, and they're gonna walk away. So while this proposal may look good, that's jumping out at me as an alarm bell right there. This is an option to buy, tie up the property for a year, hey, if a year from now, we're in the market for building this little shopping center in the center of North Branford, we can go ahead and do it, otherwise they're gonna walk away.
And if somebody else comes along, they can...
So this thing does deserve some time and discussion, and it's not something we should take lightly, but just looking at this very quickly, I'm, I'm seriously concerned about the intent of this developer, and since it's the only game we've got, I don't know that we wanna tie up the property for a year and be strapped into having to do something with these people in their own good time frame.
Well, having Mr. Sacco look at that today, he did not mention anything about what they proposed to state unusual, so...
That's unusual to me, a year tying up a piece of property for $20,000.
I mean, he is involved in this constantly, so I, I don't know, I, actually, I will talk to him about that, but I think it would be a good idea to have a separate meeting for it, if you all are willing to do that, and come with your questions, what you want in there, and we can, now, you've, you've gotta find a date, but it has to be before the 18th, because that's in the RFP, and...
Well, it can be that same night, the 16th, we can meet at 6 o'clock.
Right.
Of, of our council meeting, and, and so from 6 to 7, it's an hour, and it's just this item.
That would be good. Again, who has to say, these people have created this committee, we're trying to assume they would be late on.
Well, if that's the date we set, then they have to come here on that day because they're coming to present to us.
And to George's, to Phil's point, yeah, then, those are, those are the things that, right off the top of the head, is it's a, we haven't said we're gonna dance with them, we haven't said we're gonna enter into the thing, but when you read through that, that's gonna be one of the questions that you come right out of the gate, is to say, okay, we're gonna, we talked about this in the EDC, it's come up before, we don't want somebody coming in to tie up the property and do nothing, and that's, that's not, that's gonna...
Yeah, but, you know, this is just their proposal, we could also say, you know what, yeah, here, here it is for a year, it's for sale at the same time.
Right, right.
You know, I mean, you can do that. We own the land, we don't have to sell it, it'd be good if we could, I mean, but, you know, I've looked at this for five minutes, and, and I don't understand the legal stuff, but I understand planning and zoning, and Kurt, these guys are such professionals, you know, the design they gave us wouldn't fly, you know? There's no way, if somebody, if any developer that knew what he was doing looked at that land and looked at the brand-new 139, this outlet onto 139 at an intersection isn't gonna happen. DOT won't let it happen, and, and, and me, as a little tiny residential developer, know that that site plan's no good. Very pretty picture, and then the other thing I know a lot of people were looking for, in looking at all their pictures they show, they, they, they have an inn with Rite Aid, and so there could be a good pharmacy there, I know a bunch of people had said that they'd like one, and it looks like they develop a lot, one of their references was Rite Aid, so we could have a, a good Rite Aid pharmacy down there.
That'll definitely shake up Central Plaza, too.
Wake 'em up.
Yep, no doubt.
I mean, it's, 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 it seems like, you know, a million dollars seems like a fair offer in this environment, so certainly worth talking to.
Everything else, hang with me, 6 o'clock.
Yeah.
Let it be said, so we can told. Mike, if you could confirm up with that date and move forward. Thank you, Jan. Okay. That was the 17th. That's what I meant, 16th and 6. Okay. Where am I? Replacement of roof ventilators at the Totucket Valley Elementary School.
Mike, have you received any additional information? Because I did bring this up at the board meeting on May 21st with them.
Yes.
Is it in a folder?
Is it in the folder, the, Don Winnicky had sent in?
No, I just saw the bids. No, I just saw the bids. Mike, maybe if you send over...
Am I forgetting something? Didn't we decide to do these as part of the project?
Yeah, but we need, we need the cost and the number of ventilators and details.
Right, that was, we started talking about it.
That wasn't one of the extras in their bid?
No, because it's not reimbursable. So it, it's not part of the bid process.
That's easy.
And, and what Don Wenicki had sent us at the last meeting, he based it off of NVHS.
Right.
But the problem is with the pitched roof, is some of the unit ventilators are already being replaced as part of the project because they have to re-remount them because of the pitched roof. So it's the remaining ventilators.
I'm not even talking about that.
That's the information that they were supposed to get back to us with. How many?
We spoke about it in our communication.
And the estimated cost.
Yeah.
So...
It didn't, didn't change too much. It's, and Anthony's bringing the spreadsheet from Don and I think it's forty, forty-one thousand down from forty-three thousand.
Per or in total?
In total, in total with twenty-one, twenty-one...
But that was, that was an estimate that they gave. And a, a lot of them are part
of the, a number of them are a part of the project because of the pitched roof. So that they don't have that big of a section left that's a flat roof.
And so these were not a part of the bid?
No, because they're not reimbursable and we don't, we don't, they didn't put them in the bid so that there's no markup on it. What happens is the Board of Ed uses a state contract of company that's on the list and they buy them and they just have the roofer put them in, place them, and then they hook them up.
Yeah, so forty-two thousand, total cost fifty, with discount forty-two thousand.
So it looks like they knocked out five from the twenty-four that they originally got the nineteen.
Right.
So what are they looking for us to do?
Well, to approve the, at, for the high school, we approved paying for it out of the funding for the project.
Twenty-one percent.
It doesn't go through the bid process because it's not reimbursable and then they dip. By not going through the bid process, we don't pay the upcharge to the contractor.
Now, when you, when you have a discount, does it say assume twenty-one percent discount?
What does assume mean?
Because assume means it will be wrong.
Right.
And we'll have to pay more.
Come back another week.
I mean, that glares.
Yeah, why is it assume?
We should know.
Where does that come from?
Well, this is Don's work product, isn't it?
Correct.
I, I guess, I, I, you know, I have no problem doing whatever we have to do for it, but I'm just a little confused on, we have, we're going to put a new roof on and these things have to come off and go back on in order to do a new roof. I don't understand why they're not included in that package right from the beginning.
Because it would cost us a lot more to have the roofer do it. And it's not reimbursable from the state.
How do we know it would cost a lot more for the roofer to do it?
Because of the high school roof project. This is, this is the same, at the high school roof project, it costs, I think it was approximately forty-five, forty-eight thousand dollars for us to buy the unit ventilators. And we had it written into the contract that the roofing company took off the old ones and placed the new ones, but the Board of Ed personnel hooked them up so that you didn't have to buy them through the roofing company. We bought them ourself through the state contract. So you didn't pay the twenty percent markup. You weren't paying all of that stuff to the roofing contractor because it wasn't reimbursable by the state anyway.
Okay, so why wouldn't we have done this before it went out the bid so that it went out the bid saying, we've got nineteen new units. You're going to put them up?
And so what else is, what else was not included in that bid? What else is not reimbursable that we're going to find out later on?
No, this is the, this is the only, this is the only item.
Why don't we wait until next week since we've been having a meeting anyway with the Board of Ed and discuss their...
State rep.
And also, so...
Well, they got to roll, though. I mean, summer's coming, school's getting out. I mean, I think we should, we should act on. We're going to do it anyway.
Yeah.
What does assume mean, though?
These items are from Grainger's, though. They order them.
They're on the state, they're on the state contract. And I think what happened on the last one is that based on the volume that they bought, they got a discount off of the list price that was there. So he's probably, maybe they got a twenty-one percent discount on the last order from the high school roof, so he's assuming that they're going to get that. I'm just surmising as to what hap, I don't know that. No one came to...
See, worst, worst case scenario is it costs fifty-three thousand.
With Grainger's, you have a discount.
Is there a delay in getting these things or are they on the shelf somewhere?
I thought that they might send someone because I mentioned it to them at the board meeting on the twenty-fourth.
Well, I think they were waiting till next Tuesday.
Yeah, so why don't we wait till Tuesday?
Right, exactly.
And we'll know whether we're going to get that discount or not.
Right, yeah.
If it's something you've got to order and it's going to take ninety days to get it, I, I would say we've got some urgency.
The last time they ordered from Grainger's, it's a national company. They'll get them from anywhere all over.
Yeah, no, they, they...
Then let's get this clarified.
I'd rather get clarification.
Not, not a problem. Move the table to projects next Tuesday.
Second.
Well, it would be our next meeting, which would be July, June sixteen.
No, June sixteen.
June sixteen, right.
We'll get all the information. Okay, I'm sorry.
No, Julian and I said it.
All right, moved by Deputy Mayor Wentworth, seconded by Counselor Diamond. Table is roll call.
Mayor Kandalora.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Wentworth.
Yes.
Counselor Angeloni.
Yes.
And Counselor Arman.
Yes.
Counselor Caprio.
Yes.
Counselor Diamond.
Yes.
Counselor Fawnin.
Yes.
Counselor Rose.
Yes.
Item A, discussion of possible referendum on bond expenditures.
Yeah, this came up at the last meeting and we've got some information from CCM, but that was actually nothing really in comparison to what Lisa Valenti was able to put together in a spreadsheet in your, in your folder as well with some look at. I guess the question being, the council wanted to set a threshold. How do other towns do it? What are, what are their thresholds in terms of the bond issuance of a five million dollar bond?
We didn't send the intermediate school out the bond, did we? I mean, we did send out the bond, I'm sorry, referendum. No, we didn't send the libraries out the referendum.
That's correct.
So why is this coming up now?
Because I brought it up.
Okay.
And I'll tell you why.
Why?
Because, and I, and I have no problem telling you, because we are carrying, you know, we're almost the most in debt town in the, in the state.
Per capita.
Per capita.
Okay.
We're so far in debt, we're so far in debt, Ben, that our mill rate is so high that we fall into the category of having some kind of a car tax relief because our mill rate is over thirty.
There you go.
And they picked thirty as a threshold, like, who could be at thirty? North Branford.
So... New Haven.
Yeah, and New Haven and Bridgeport.
Bridgeport.
Okay, so, so anyway, so what I said at the last meeting was, you know what, we should look at this. And, and I did talk to some other towns and said, you know what? So we're, we're in a lot of debt. We have future projects that are going to be a lot of money. Alls I want to do is pick a number and I don't want to have it, like, I was surprised at how, how low a lot of these numbers are and I don't want to stop business. Like, I don't want to stop our five million dollars or whatever we did for roads and all that. But I think eighty or a hundred million dollars, we should send it to a vote.
Absolutely. Eighty or a hundred, Mike, definitely. That's, that's a lot of money.
So, well, what I'm saying is a school, a town hall, something like that, five votes up here shouldn't be able to encumber, you know, take away everybody's vacation because they're paying for something that five people voted for. So that was my rationale.
I'm surprised how low these are.
See how low they are?
They're all over the place.
And you see, and then I did some research after I got this and at first you'd say, oh, wow, simple majority of whoever votes, because a bunch of the towns do that, you'd say, wow, you must never get anything done. But what those people are saying is, no, that gets people out because...
Right, I agree with that.
You know, so instead of saying, oh, at five percent of the vote, nothing happens, you say, simple, if three people vote and two people say something, they win and it gets people out. So I think we have to look at two things. We pick a number, whether it's fifteen million or, or two hundred thousand or twenty million. So we have to, we have to pick that if we want to do this and then we have to pick what part of the electorate wins. And I, I got to tell you, I like the simple majority of who voted. You know what? Voter beware. But that's just me. So that's, that's why it's hit. Now, I did have some support from the rest of the council to get it here.
If we, if we, if we did that, we might not have two libraries. That would have been a good thing.
I'll almost guarantee that we wouldn't have had two libraries.
Yeah, you ain't kidding.
Well, every time we go to a referendum, it costs us money as well. So you don't want to, you know, you don't want to hold up business.
Well, you don't want to do it for two hundred thousand dollars, that's for sure.
Well, that's exactly...
That's, that's a very minimal number.
That's a good point. I mean, mo-most towns aren't, even though they have these thresholds here, say, you know, whether it's under a hundred, they're not going to bond for anything. Probably as a rule of thumb, less than probably two million go into the market.
Right.
The way I look at it, people have a right to vote for something.
Absolutely. I agree with that, too.
I think it has to be a higher number than a million.
Oh, yeah.
We just bonded by...
Five million. We just got a couple of, we got our interest.
My, my area where I live with the roads, that's it, for five mil.
And talking with Lisa, you, you, I guess, and subject to John's comment, but I think you could tag it on to, if you got to the point you said, whatever number you set for your threshold and to put it on to November ballot, because...
Right, that's right.
Versus the budget referendum. You could, given enough time and preparation, you could stick it on to November if you wanted.
That's what we wanted to do.
Whatever threshold, you could do that. And we all know that every November, there's, there's an election. So there's never an off year in, in November, so...
Another fascinating thing that I saw somewhere here is like, you know, some towns do it a percentage over their budget or a percentage over an increase maybe well, so, you know, it's interesting.
They were still very, very modest.
They were modest. Well, that's why their mill rates aren't over thirty, Joe.
Well, one of the things that concerns me is, and one thing we've taken advantage of recently, is refinancing bonds. I mean, technically, you're bonding when you go out and refinance. We did it, not to spend money, but save money. We don't want to back ourselves into a situation where we say, well, we're going to refinance, lower our interest rate and we've got to put that on a referendum.
Right.
And then people vote that down. You're forced to spend more money.
If somebody doesn't understand and they vote against it, yeah, that's a problem.
You got to set a number that's high enough.
Well, and then there's also the opportunity for a little chicanery where if the number is five million bucks...
You refinance for four.
Or whatever, they break, break the project.
Go out and bond, bond four and a half million bucks and vote five times in a year.
So we must ponder this.
So it's not, I don't think it's a simple question. The numbers we got from these other towns, there's no way we would ever bond those amounts.
Right, that's crazy.
I think they've got ordinances or regulations in those towns that are seventy-five years old.
Yeah, nineteen twenty or so.
But they're all the towns around us and they're, and that's what they have.
You want, you, the main complaint I hear from a lot of people in this town is, for the tax dollars they're paying, they get nothing. That's the complaint I hear from a lot of people in this town.
Paying down their debt on two libraries.
Yeah, well, but that, that's what I hear from a lot of people. I mean, it, it's not a bad idea to leave it up to the people, but then if we're going to do this, we got to think about a number that's going to be in, in a good area because if we do it too small, we're going to actually hurt ourselves.
And I, I, at the last meeting, I, you know, I was the leader of, we're not going to be so low that we stop being able to fix roads or fix buildings or put a roof on the school or something.
But you're talking about capital, major projects like a school, which is in our future or, you know, the redevelopment of our, the technical center of the town. I mean, that's what we're talking about. Was you talking about fifty million or something like that or whatever?
Whatever it is. I mean, I think fifty million is a serious, a serious nut to carry and that the town people should be able to vote on.
I agree with that.
You know, but, and I don't want, you know, I, so, so maybe we all, you know, look at these things and put it on another agenda.
Yeah, I'd like to make an emotional idea of this.
I'll, I'll second that.
Wait, wait just a minute.
Table, let's table.
Okay, moved by...
To the next agenda.
Yeah, carry it over.
I mean, you can always, if we're too busy, we can table it the next time, too, you know? We're not going to bond anything for, for, you know, a while. So we got time to think about this.
Moved by Counselor Arman.
That's enough for a while.
Yeah.
Seconded by Counselor Rose.
Approve it. It's as good as spent.
Roll call.
Mayor Kandalora.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Wentworth.
Yes.
Counselor Angeloni.
Yes.
Counselor Arman.
Yes.
Counselor Caprio.
Yes.
Counselor Diamond.
Yes.
Counselor Fawnin.
Yes.
Counselor Rose.
Yes.
Okay, new business discussion in action. Item A, approval of job description for park and recreation supervisor.
Yeah, I'd like to get your approval on updating the job description for the position of park's direct supervisor.
Was that something we used before that had Frank Conley's name on it? Is it?
That's the last time, yeah, that was the last time it was revised, was two thousand and Frank, I think.
So the highlighted items are revised.
Yeah, actually, revise, I, I had sent out in the packet, it was yellow. And then revised is the underlined portions on the first page, talking about responsibility for supervising ongoing maintenance review and upgrades of parks and playground equipment on a routine basis throughout the year. Was in that middle paragraph under district duties. And then the underlying piece I added was the, in the budget, in addition to budget estimates submitting the CIP requests. The agenda says supervisor, but this is director's position, which... It's director. It's director?
Should there be any specific reference to the potato and corn festival, which has become a rather large undertaking in and of itself?
No, you don't want to, like, surprise them with it.
Yeah, you should probably save it and guess what?
Right. You got a headache.
This is going to take up all your time.
Ow, this brought to my mind over there, put them there at the time clock.
Yeah, I think one of the, one of the issues for Pam was she pretty much washed her hands up the, of the festival or tried to, which was a real problem.
Yeah. I mean, really, they should be called the, what is it? The director, the recreation director and the corn and potato director.
Well, she wasn't the... She didn't, she didn't wash her hands of the festival. Her saying that was the rationale that it tires you, huh?
Well, no, she did come in for the council and washed her hands.
I remember she said that, but that's not...
But you know what?
Well, because we said she couldn't do that.
She came here to resign.
Right.
Right, yeah.
She did.
But if we step back for a second, like, park rec, what does it offer the people in our town or the citizens? You know, what is it supposed to offer?
Well, they have that summer program for kids.
Right.
Which is a good thing.
Oh, yeah.
And it helps a lot of people.
I know, they have bus trips.
They do movie nights and all that stuff, too.
Right.
They were just doing a Frozen movie night the other night. They do a lot of things.
They did the Sandlot or Little Egypt, right?
Little...
Yeah, social activities, CEO Center.
Yeah, it's an important part of a community, that's for sure.
Right, absolutely.
So that's basically where I was talking with it.
Mike is, Lauren accepted the interview?
Yes.
I would definitely put oversea, uh, potato festival.
Oversea, oversees the planning, organization, and execution of the corn and potato festival.
Well, also the finance. So she asked her, whoever it is, has to be responsible for the finances, right?
Okay, so oversees the planning, organization, finances, and execution of the corn and potato.
Potato and corn.
There you go.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Poco, poco.
Sorry.
Like, what the heck is paco?
Yeah, you're in the thought, like.
It's freaking us out.
Paco in some landscape.
No, I, I, I think it's a valid point, and it's a lot of concern. Uh, you know, just talking with, with Kurt, the, the reference to the senior center, kinda like, should be more, more frontline. I mean, that, that is part of, uh, a major function, the oversight up there.
Because you have several streams of revenue, basically, with Park Rec. So how do you, how does, you know, how to run it, like, running a business? I mean, you have Park Rec with the fitness center.
Correct.
Your bus trips, whatnot. Keep track of those revenues for, you know, Park Rec. Then you have summer camps.
Right.
We're going to potato festival, seniors.
Right. Well, I think, I think the council went, uh, down the right path by putting the part-time receptionist out front, letting the secretary go back and handle those kinda administrative duties. If you can have that person kinda be the charge of the clerical function, and have this person on an oversight role to make sure it's getting done properly, uh, that'll go a long way to, to resolving some of the issues we've had as far as timeliness of getting money down here and reports and so on. So, uh.
You should have more than one person, you should have about two or three persons.
Right, definitely, definitely. Cross-trained all the employees that are, um, you know, I, I agree with you that the, the, the highlight that Mike put in there, about two-thirds, what he notices, maintain accurate fund accounts, cash receipts and deposits, is paramount from our perspective down in the finance department. That's, uh, needs to be, you know, maintained in a timely fashion and keep the records up to date.
Maybe Marie, just go under the supervision exercise, and just go supervise, supervises department personnel, and provides guidance to volunteers in the various townwide recreation, senior center, and potato and corn festival festivities, and just leave it at that. And just leave, leave it at that.
Yeah, that's a good idea. I'll agree with you, Al.
You're buying me dinner.
We'll know after next Tuesday.
No.
Gotta be a warm body, gotta be a warm body.
Mike, Mike, has Lauren expressed any interest in, um?
Her minute?
You know, yeah, pursuing, or, or.
Too early, too early, too early, but, you know, I'm talking with her about it, you know, and she's stepping up to, to take on the role, and, uh, if she wants to throw her hat in, she can throw her hat in. Without a doubt.
I mean, in my mind, she grew up in town, she's been there, you know, I think, she's a very big, a very good candidate.
I hear she lives in.
Yeah, I think she's a very good candidate.
Who's his first name?
Lauren. Lauren Norman. She's the, she's the supervisor right now, and has been for ten plus years.
Eighty-five years.
Okay, fine.
Would it be appropriate to add, you know, maybe, um, events, you know, or associated events to that department? Maybe just keep it general?
Yeah, but I think, I think everybody feels it.
Yeah, it's not an employment contract, so don't get too hung up on it.
We, right. We don't wanna make 'em a way of it.
Right, exactly. We don't wanna be in a position where, hey, nobody told me, and look, look what you're putting out, this is a six-month job by itself.
Right.
I think that should be spoke out, because.
Yeah, I mean, there is a committee, really, but I agree, I mean, you don't wanna fly inside anybody, but, yeah.
The other thing, Mike, is, in the second paragraph of description of duties, where it says, um, scheduled facilities for use by town residents, including the school gyms, the Park and Rec Commission doesn't have anything to do with the school gyms.
Right.
The, the organizations have to do that through the schools, the individual schools. So I think that has to be taken out of there.
Right, don't the building principals actually do it?
Well, they, the request comes to the building.
So I'll end at residents and strike that. But I will add, under supervised exercise after senior center programs, uh, potato and corn festival and other events.
Right.
Are we okay with those two being changed?
Mike, I totally unrelated, did we ever vote to save their, uh, Park Rec, a safe?
No, we never got to be, uh, safe. We have a type of lockbox, but not a safe. That's still something to talk about.
Yeah, thanks, Jim. What kinda software, do they run, like, QuickBooks, or just?
They run a program called RecTrack. That all their programs are booked through, and also they have a thing called WebTrack, that people couldn't go online and register for courses and pay online through credit card means. So RecTrack and WebTrack are kinda related. Plus, they use the typical Microsoft Office suite of, you know, Word and Excel, that sort of thing.
Thanks, Anthony.
Just a question I don't know, who maintains, like, the, the park, um, infrastructure? Is that town, is that public works that does that? Like, what happens if something, a slide is broken or something?
Yeah, public.
Well, well, it goes to the rec department, and then they call Franny.
Well, there's, she has stuff, she has a line item in her budget. There is a line item in the Park and Rec Department budget for maintenance of things. So this person, part of their duties is inspection of parks. So it would be their duty to inspect and whatever. If it's something that the, that Franny's department can handle, like North Farmville Park.
Right.
There was something there where they had to reset something.
Right.
Rather than pay to have it done, then that's something that they work out and have worked out in the past. If it's something she has to contract with a contractor to come in and fix, she does have, there is money in the budget. There's a line item for that.
I mean, further, special on this, or?
I have a motion then to, with those changes, approve that.
I make a motion to change the revised job description for the director of Park and Rec, by adding under supervision exercise, potato and corn festival, and other events, and deleting under description of duties, um, schedule of facilities by town residents, and strike including school gyms. So the motion is to accept the thing with those two corrections.
Sure.
Moved by Councilor Angeloni, excuse me. Seconded by Councilor Armond. Roll call.
Mayor Candy Laura.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Whitmore.
Yes.
Councilor Angeloni.
Yes.
Councilor Armond. Councilor Caprio.
Yes.
Councilor Diamond.
Yes.
Councilor Fawnin.
Yes.
Councilor Rose.
Yes.
Item B, review of self-insurance fund policy.
I know we've gotta beat this to death. I have one last revision.
The one in our packet, then, yeah.
We haven't beat this to death yet.
Yeah.
Wait an hour.
We beat everything to death.
Many times we get it right.
Well, you know, it's his last one, we're looking at it, trying to refine it, and everything else, making two rows.
So this one is different than?
Yeah, the very first page. It's underlined, following the county attorney's format of reflecting changes. Basically, it just says, any change to the financial parameters of this plan, say the council, so yours now says, ah, we're not gonna have any stop-loss insurance, we're gonna wing it. Or we're not gonna do this. It needs six votes of the council. Any change that will affect the financial, financing of the self-insurance reserve should be blessed by all, by a six-member vote. And you see on the.
Would that be true of the annual determination amount for the risk corridor we're going to fund?
Um, we could.
No, I don't want to.
Yes.
You could.
Yes, yes. And also.
Do that, because that's a budget item.
Exactly. And on the second page, you notice where, um, it's almost to the bottom where it had approval by two-thirds. They also put that six votes in there as well. That was a point that Al had brought up last month. That two-thirds, you know, make sure you get six votes. So the change, and I thanked Don Winkie for that change on the first page. He said, you know, the women of the council could change, and they could play with the parameters, and it could significantly impact the finances of the plan. So we get that same six-vote blessing before we make any changes. So that's the change, which is what's different from in your packet, that one section in the front there that's underlined.
So Anthony, I know, see now, I'm gonna have to, sorry.
Can you keep me here till ten now?
No, I'll do it quick. So tell me one more time why it's not two separate accounts. We have our projected annual insurance cost.
Correct.
And if we're in a perfect world, and all the projected people that got sick, get sick. Um, that's what we need.
Right.
Our fund, and that's the other thing, it says, you know, like, the level of funding. We don't have that in here, and I've talked to a couple different towns, like, how much money we want in the bank. And that's the money that I want separate. And then the insurance company calls you up and says, whoa, uh, you got eighteen catastrophic illnesses, move some money. But why, and I, and I've heard everything from towns want, like, say it costs us five million a year, they want five million, at least five million in the bank. Or some say, you know, one point two times, or up to one and a half times, your annual thing. So, so my thing is, why isn't that money, like, right now, we have our one pot.
Correct.
And, and I don't know why we need to have one pot. I would much rather have it a separate account, that, that, that reserve fund, that's really just the town's insurance, um, program, or, um, pot, that we move in there if the projected insurance for the year is wrong. Now, some years, we're gonna be able to take a hundred thousand or two hundred thousand out of the projected cost and put into that account. And some years, we're gonna take two hundred, three hundred, or a million dollars out of that account and put back into the operating cost.
Then you're talking the stop, staff loss coverage.
Not the stop-loss insurance, our, our risk corridor.
The risk corridor.
The risk corridor should be, and I've, you know, and I, I know my, my sister-in-law ran it in Madison, and it was like, one point three times your annual operating was what they wanted in the bank.
There's another way of ensuring solvency, in case you have a bunch of catastrophic losses to that one pot you're saving now. Is that right?
So I don't know, like, we don't have that level called out, like, what, that level's not out here, I didn't see it.
Page two, funding goal, article five. The town's goal to maintain a minimum.
Wait a minute, which one, the one you just gave me?
Yes, that part hasn't changed.
The one you just gave me, page two.
Article five, funding goal. The town's goal.
Funding goal.
To maintain a minimum reserve in the fiscal year equivalent to the total of the maximum exposure for health-related claims and expenses annually calculated.
All right, so we got that, so we're a hundred percent.
And any incurred, incurred but not recorded IDNR claims. So those are the claims that, your claims in May or June, let's say, theoretically haven't hit by June thirtieth. So that's the total we wanna have in our pot. The maximum amount of claims you could have, plus the claims you don't know about.
All right, so I think what they were telling me was, the ones that were doing it, the ones that are successful at it, they have like a hundred and twenty percent.
Right.
Of your operating in that. And so we're just a hundred percent, plus the ones we don't know about.
Correct.
But the ones we don't know about, it's kinda late to fund them.
Correct. But this, remember, this is gonna happen towards January timeframe into your budget. So it's gonna be based on historic information, some historic trends you're gonna have by that time. I, the initial go-around of this, if you go back to the earlier gyration, when I cut and paste it from various towns, I did have that percentage in there, I think it was a hundred and ten percent, a hundred and ten. And, uh, in talking with Dave Matthew, he recommended this language instead, where it talks about the, your maximum exposure for health-related claims and expenses calculated annually, as well as any of the incurred but not recorded claims.
All right, and then, so then, and then we can't dip, and that's the other thing that this whole council didn't wanna do, is be able to dip into that to fund the general government.
Right.
Because we got ahead. I mean, so, so that's where the two-thirds vote.
Correct.
Comes in.
Surplus reserves.
And I mean, I think what you do is, you don't, what you do is, if you, if you had a real healthy year, you then can take that money to fund next year's expenses. You know, and then, but, and maintain your hundred and ten or a hundred and twenty percent.
We won't take any, we'll just fund less.
Just not fund less, exactly.
Right, we'll fund less. So is that why it has, so, so you're saying it has to be one account?
It's one fund on our books, called the Health Insurance Reserve.
Oh, well, you're gonna have it invested in all that anyway.
Correct, correct. So when that money goes in there on July first, our piece and the Board of Ed's piece, it'll immediately be invested in earning interest. And then every month, the Board of Ed in town will transfer money.
You wanna invest that conservatively, though. My case, or, you know, penny stocks and, uh, all right.
Actually, getting point six on money marketing funds.
Well, why do you feel it would be safer if it was a separate fund, as opposed to having a discipline to say, this money?
Because I just feel that it would be a red flag, and everybody would know about it. You know, like, right now, we're gonna have, so we're gonna be funding five million a year for our costs, and we're gonna have six million in the bank. So we're gonna have eleven million in the bank that Blue Cross Blue Shield goes into and takes out all the time. And then we have a lot of catastrophic illnesses, and then all of a sudden in January, we're down to two million in the bank because we had a lot of stuff sick. So what I'm saying is, and I know we did, uh, say that we're gonna have monthly reports from, from Anthony as well. But, I mean, that, you know, the money can only be used for the health. And, um, you know, we all agree on that.
Well, there is this, there's a line.
I just thought that the operating capital and the savings account should be separate, but.
It says, transfers for non-healthcare-related purposes will not be permitted from this fund. So the, the fund that we're putting in there, we, we can't say, oh, you know what? We're short on the town side by a hundred thousand, so we don't need this money right now, so let's just take it out here and take it out of this fund and move it over there.
The employees' contribution fund this as well, correct?
That is correct.
Right, so you get that out of their paycheck every two weeks or something?
That is correct.
And that goes into this fund then, though?
Well, because the, let's say it's ten thousand dollars a month for the town side. So eight thousand might come from the town itself, and two thousand is the employee deduction to get your ten thousand.
And those come right out of their checks and go right in there.
Correct.
Right.
So.
Same with the Board of Ed, the, the same, you know, probation.
It's solid, I mean, you can't be touched by.
So, Joe, I didn't say I had a good reason for it, I'm just stuck on it.
It just reminded me so much of Al Gore's lockbox for social security. I just couldn't believe you were proposing it.
Hey, me and Al Gore, you know, we both are named Al.
So we're good?
I'm good.
All right.
So do we have to adopt this, make a motion, or do you, okay? All right, so I'm.
Did you look at it? Yeah, I, I'm very familiar with self-insure plans.
No.
I, did you?
You don't wanna hear my comment.
John, did you look at this, so we can vote on it?
Yeah, yeah, well, I looked at it, I looked at one of its earlier iterations. Based on what you said, if that's the only change. Yeah, I'm fine.
We know that.
I make a motion to adopt the Health Insurance Reserve Fund Policy and Procedures as presented.
I'll second that.
Moved by Councilor Angeloni, seconded by Councilor Diamond, roll call.
Mayor Candy Laura.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Whitmore.
Yes.
Councilor Angeloni.
Yes.
Councilor Armond.
Yes.
Councilor Caprio.
Yes.
Councilor Diamond.
Yes.
Councilor Fawnin.
Yes.
Councilor Rose.
Yes.
All right. Review of light ordinance, examples of North Haven and Madison.
I have a question for John about this. I, I.
Yes, ma'am.
I understand that the council has discussed this in previous years. Why are you opposed to?
Oh, I'm not opposed to it, I'm a little, I'm a little bit.
Why is it that you're opposed to it?
No, no, I'm, well, frankly, frankly, uh. No, no, I, well, frankly, frankly, we can do, we can do everything we can do right now with, without it. In other words, you know, we have, we are, anything that has to do with the health, safety, or welfare of the community, we can go into court under the statute and get injunction. The problem with the blighted stuff, particularly the one that cited in here, is the first three criteria are all the same things that everybody has. The fourth is the definition of blight and the considerations. And you're going to go in court, and a judge is going to say, you know, somebody, you know, someone's junk is someone else's antiques. And, you know, if someone's windows are broken, and kids are going in there and shooting up drugs and stuff, you don't need a blight ordinance for that, there's.
What about that situation of the people that came here, was it last one?
Well, I think, to be very honest with you, my observation of the reaction of the council was that there, I don't think the council thought it was so terrible, the situation they were describing. There are, listen, we have condemned, one of the things that I did, I didn't, I wasn't happy about it because it was an 1830 house, but kids were going in there and drinking, and we condemned it, and it was torn down, and we made them pay for it. They don't have to pay for the cost. I mean, now, I'm not, I wouldn't have, I mean, I'm a little, shall we say, I was surprised that some of my ordinances weren't in here for comparison, because I think I've done it at least twice, if not three times. And the council fully debated it, and it's pretty much the same issue all the time. It actually has some constitutional implications. If you're going to be taking people's property or making them do something, mowing the lawn, you don't like the color of the paint, I mean, some of this is planning and zoning, and you can get it in through there, but you're talking about, the thing with Madison, what a project. They got, I mean, they go before a panel, how humiliating. And, you know, it's a public thing, and they get fined, and they, you know, that's a, I think, I wouldn't, I wouldn't be opposed to a very tightly drafted one where you don't have to worry about someone's tastes being out of sorts with yours.
There's a difference between taste and unmaintained property.
Well.
You know, and it may not bother us if we don't live next door to a property that is not maintained, you know.
It's a, I understand, but no judge is going to, no judge is going to sanction a homeowner because they didn't mow their lawn.
Right.
Or because they have debris in their backyard that's offensive to somebody else. I'm not minimizing it because I wouldn't want to be the next-door neighbor. But those are, those are the tops, types of problems that you have with the blight ordinance. And as I said, anything that has to do with, you know, if someone's got a, you know, if there's still a potty in the backyard from when they first did some renovations, and they never took it out, and there's a, you know, that's kind of different, but. I was more thinking along the lines of somebody who had like three junk boats and six junk cars. Well, we have an ordinance for that. You can only have so many. We can only have two unregistered vehicles on your property.
You know what's happening now is.
I know a few houses where that is.
I do, too.
Yeah.
They're starting a task force, I forget what town it was, maybe it's Cheshire, or, you know, due to hoarding and that type of thing.
Yep.
Because some of our first responders, like firemen, you know, first on the scene, are, you know, walking into these situations. And I know at the state level, they've been talking about doing some type of, I got an email late today about like a flow chart, basically.
Even.
I'll send it to everyone tomorrow.
Anthony, even with the hoarding, literally, it depends on where you're hoarding the stuff. If you're hoarding it at the base of a stairway, that's very different than if you're hoarding it in a closet somewhere.
This, I mean, you have electrical panels, you have egress, you have, you know, there's a lot.
How do you enforce something like that that's inside, though? I mean, unless you're walking.
Well, that's a problem.
I'll send you this email, it'll show you the whole flow chart, what they're trying to do.
I mean, you have, you know, safety concerns outside of a property for the public to see inside their house, I don't know what you can do.
I mean, you know, we're in bad economic times, but even the banks aren't taking care of a lot of the houses that have.
Right, so then, well, blight ordinance could address some of that.
We had a guy in North Branford, we brought him to court, he had tons of junk automotive material, and that's one of the things that they cited in here. And all he did was he put a tarp over it, and that was okay. So, you know, his backyard, his back, in front of his back door, he had tables of absolute junk stuff. I mean, and the next-door neighbor would constantly contact the town and be very upset about that, and, you know, every, every, about a week before, we had to go to court. And the CEO went out there from the town to take pictures, because you've got to keep, you have to get updated pictures, you know, right at that, that time. You know, he showed a table with a, with a blue tarp over it, no different than your barbecue, or your picnic tables and your barbecue cooker, whatever. So, I mean, there's, you, you, you know, it's not too much you can really do until it gets into a situation where there are health and, health and safety issues are involved. And then you do have the ability with E-Sure and under our, under state statute to take action, you know. So that's, I actually, if you look at the Madison one, that was pretty invasive. I mean, that, that really makes a spectacle out of, and some of these people may have problems, you know, they may have, not only financial, they have, you know, they have, they have emotional problems. And so anyway, it's a tough question, it's tough, but I can honestly say.
But you do have some foreclosed houses around here that they are vast. I mean, the bank just, that's, that's a good, you can recommend.
Well, that's, the banks let them go.
Yeah.
They would, they should have, they purchased the property, they even have responsibility to be.
They do. Well, you, you will be breaching a provision in your mortgage if you don't maintain your property.
No, I'm saying if a bank takes over a property.
Yeah.
Then how do you enforce, you know, a bank maintaining a property?
Oh, well, you know. Doesn't look like we're going to do a blight ordinance, guys.
I, we've sat through.
We've sat through this hour.
Next.
Since 1989, we've looked at it at least three times. And when you really look at everything that we have already, we're lacking the full-time zoning enforcement officer. That's what we're lacking. We don't need another ordinance. And then when you do have one, you need them to do their job.
We need somebody who just does that, too.
All right. Item 14, citizen statements, petitions, and correspondence.
Another fine that she got me.
Okay. We don't have an executive session, I don't believe.
Oh, bummer.
So I have a motion to adjourn.
Bye-bye.
Okay, that was moved in harmony.
Yeah.
Council Angeloni, roll call.
Mayor Candelaure?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Whitmore?
Yes.
Council Angeloni?
Yes.
Council Armond?
Yes.
Council Caprio?
Absolutely.
Council Diamond?
Yes.
Council Fawnin?
Yes.
Council Rose?
Yes.